All right, here I go.
Good evening. I would like to call Monday, June 10th, 2024 Common Council meeting into order. Clerk Toronto, I believe you would like to make some comments regarding the length for this meeting and other expectations.
Good evening, members of the public. For audio quality, we will be muting everyone not speaking by default. To maintain good audio quality for council members and yourself. If you would like to speak during the meeting on a specific agenda item, please submit your request in the chat. Directions to do so will be listed in the chat. We ask that you provide your full name and address as those are required for all speakers at in-person council meetings. If you would like to be called on during the meeting to provide public input, please insert the following into the chat and you will be called on during the relevant time for public input. My name is full name and I live at address and I would like to speak on, for, or against agenda item. You will then be given five minutes to speak. Please be sure to unmute yourself prior to giving your remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, do we have Reverend Matt Tracy from Community Baptist Church here? If you are, if you could please come up to the podium for the invocation, welcome. Thank you so much.
All right, let's pray together. God our gracious and heavenly Father, we're thankful that you are merciful, that you are just, you are sovereign God, that all authority rests with you. I thank you for these servants, these stewards of the government that you've ordained. I pray that you give wisdom and oversight as decisions are made, issues are discussed tonight. I pray that we would be good citizens in this this committee that you've established. We thank you for, again, these servants who are here to steward the government that you've established here. We pray these things in your precious and holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Will you please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Clerk Toronto, would you please call the roll?
President McBride.
Present.
Vice President Nizgatsky.
Present.
Councilmember Gooden Rogers is excused. Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Present.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Councilmember Lee.
Present.
Councilmember Warner.
Present.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Present.
Councilmember Dr. Davis. Eight councilmembers present.
Thank you. At this time, we will have reports from the Subcommittee on Minutes. Clerk Toronto?
Yes. I'm going to read the language for the May 28th, 2024 council meeting minutes.
Seven.
We have seven members here.
Currently, it's seven. Dr. Davis.
Sorry, seven. My apologies. No problem. Thank you. To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the May 28th, 2024 meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved.
Thank you.
Motion to accept the May 28th, 2024 minutes.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. Any objections? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposition? The motion's carried. Clerk Toronto?
To the Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the February 6th, 2023 and the February 13th, 2023 meeting of the council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved. This recommendation for approval is made recognizing that three current members of the council were not seated in 2023 and such as will be abstaining from any formal approval of old minutes.
Motion to accept the February 6th and February 15th, 2023 minutes.
Second.
They're moving seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Thank you. There are no special business. There's also no reports from the city tonight. I would like to state that get the bill correct. Bill number that was tabled.
Twenty-four twenty.
Twenty-four twenty. If you are here for Bill 2420, that bill has been tabled until June 24th meeting. Again, if you are here for Bill 2420, that bill has been tabled until June 24th. All right. There's no committee of the whole this time. We will move to bills on third reading. I mean, we will go straight to resolutions. This portion of the council meeting where council hears bills filed as proposed resolutions. The title of these proposed resolution is read by the clerk. A report from the committee chairperson of the standing committee, which the bill was referred to, for an advisory review and a recommendation then is given. During the public portion, on each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. We ask that you please give your name, residential address, and comments of the bill. If you have any questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during their rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes, with those speaking in favor going first, followed by those in opposition, then a five-minute rebuttal for the presenter of the bill. At this time, Clerk Joe?
I'd just like to state my attendance here at the meeting. I'm here. Oliver Davis here. Sorry, I was outside catching my breath.
Thank you, Dr. Davis. Duly noted.
Thank you.
At this time, I would ask Clerk Toronto if you would please give Bill 2418 a reading.
A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving an agent negotiator to represent the Common Council and addressing the city advisory negotiating team for the 2024 Teamster labor negotiations.
Thank you so much. And there is a committee report.
There is, Chair. This was heard in Personnel and Finance and it was given a favorable recommendation to the full council.
Thank you. The petitioner?
Um, yes, Chair. Um, this bill is basically addressing the negotiating team for the Teamsters. They're up for a contract negotiation this year. And this names the agent, which is Mr. Palmer, and councilmembers Sheilin Nizgatsky, Troy Warner, and Karen White. So this is a formal resolution stating that team, and I ask for the support of the resolution.
Thank you. At this time, I will turn to my colleagues. Are there any questions regarding Resolution 2418? Seeing none, I'll open it up to the public portion, seeing if there's anyone speaking in favor of Resolution 2418. Seeing none, same said, if there anyone speaking in opposition of 2418. Seeing none, the public portion is now closed. I will turn back to council to see if there are any comments.
President McBride, one quick comment if I may?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
One, one quick comment?
Sure.
I would just reiterate my email. I would encourage council, there's three negotiations, Teamsters, police, and fire. Uh, they are involved and take up quite a bit of time and encourage council to break those up evenly so that three councilmembers sit on each of those and we're not doubling up on the negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you so much for that because we do need to continue to pass a resolution to get the firefighters' um, team build as well. Um, so we need council to please um, volunteer to get on those commissions. We need, we need your voice at the table to represent the council. Thank you for that. Any other comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adopt 2418.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Toronto, the roll please.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Vice President Nizgatsky.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Resolution 2418 has been adopted. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Resolution 2419 a reading?
A resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving an agreement extending the St. Joseph County housing consortium and authorizing the execution thereof.
Thank you. Is there a committee report?
Yes, the bill was heard this afternoon by the Community Investment Committee and comes forward with a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Petitioner, would you please present the bill? Welcome.
Good evening. Liz Merdick, Chief Neighborhoods Officer with the Department of Community Investment Offices on 13th floor of this building. The resolution before you authorizes the mayor to execute documents to renew the St. Joseph County Housing Consortium um, under an interlocal agreement that's between three different jurisdictions, including the city of South Bend, the county, and the city of Mishawaka. Uh, the consortium was established in 1991 as a means for um, us to receive federal home program dollars from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And the agreement extends the consortium for another three years uh, and with an automatic renewal thereafter, but with the option, uh, the right to uh, not participate. So, on behalf of the Housing Consortium, request that you approve this resolution and can answer any questions.
Thank you, council. Do you have any questions for the petitioner? Seeing none, I'll turn to the public. The public portion is now open. I would like to see if there's anyone like to speak in favor of Resolution 2419.
I do not see anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of the bill.
Same said, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
I do not see anyone from the public wishing to speak in opposition of the bill.
Thank you. With that, the public portion is now closed. I will turn back to my colleagues. Are there any comments? Seeing none, I would like to entertain a motion regarding Resolution 2419.
Move for passage.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Clerk Toronto, the roll please.
Councilmember Dr. Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember Bolden Simpson.
Aye.
Councilmember Warner.
Aye.
Councilmember Lee.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Thomas Morgan.
Aye.
Vice President Nizgatsky.
Aye.
President McBride.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Resolution 2419 has been adopted. Again, Resolution 2420 has been tabled until June 24th. Now we turn to bills on first reading. Clerk Toronto, would you please give Bill 2624 a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, amending ordinance number 10978-23, which fixes maximum salaries and wages of appointed officers and non-bargaining employees of executive departments of the City of South Bend for calendar year 2024 to add a full-time employee to two existing positions and to make title and salary changes to two existing full-time positions.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 2624 to Personnel and Finance for public hearing and third reading on June 24th.
So move.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill 2724 a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, for budget transfers for various departments within the City of South Bend, Indiana for the year 2024.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 2724 to Personnel and Finance for public hearing and third reading on June 24th.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill 2824 a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city services operations for the year 2024, of 2,000 from General Fund Number 101, 3 million from the Parks and Recreation Fund Number 201, 50,000 from the Gift Donation Request Fund Number 217, 180,000 from the Law Enforcement Continuing Education Fund Number 220, 38,000 from the Code Enforcement Fund 230, 1,750,000 from the local tax, from the local income tax Economic Development Fund Number 408, 33,260 from the Morris Performing Arts Operations Fund Number 602, 200,000 from the Water Works Capital Fund Number 622, 240,000 from the Sewer Repair Insurance Fund Number 640, 2,300,000 from the Sewage Water Works Operations Fund Number 641, 2,704,951 from the Sewage Works Capital Fund Number 642, and 50,000 from the Century Center Capital Fund Number 671.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 2824 to Personnel and Finance for public hearing and third reading on June 24th.
So move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Clerk Toronto, will you please give Bill 2924 a first reading?
First reading on an ordinance of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, approving a petition of the Advisory Board of Zoning Appeals for the property located at 1830 Lear Street, Councilmanic District Number 3 in the City of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you. I would like to entertain a motion to send Bill 2924 to South Bend Plan Commission for July 1st and then to zoning and annexation for public hearing and third reading on July 8th.
So move. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion's carried. Council, is there any unfinished business?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Dr. Davis?
Thank you. Uh, again, um, I appreciate the fact that I sent the council a, a letter regarding the privilege of the floor. I recognize our time went way over this afternoon, so I'm requesting us to please be able to have that in two weeks if possible. Um, you can look at um, the comment because it's not just something that we're going to solve in one meeting. It is something that we'll solve on time. What I suggested, that we meet in June, July, and come up sometime in August with something. I didn't want to rush, but I wanted us to do a thorough um, understanding of what other Indiana cities are doing as relates to the privilege of the floor, so I would like for us to look at that. Um, also, I, since I was late outside talking, I'm not sure if you have. I was, um, still want to um, pay my respects to the Honorable Jerry Miller. Um, I think um, he passed away. He was nine years old. And I think that I wanted to make sure that I at least paid my respects. I got a chance to meet him on several occasions and just wanted to say that he served South Bend from 1972 to 1975. He also served as State Chairman of Indiana Democratic Party as the St. Joe County Commissioner. Um, Mayor Miller, during his career, he met um, high political figures. He was also pivotal in the construction of the Century Center, Island Park, and the preliminary development of the Eastways that we were talking this afternoon. So, I just want to offer my condolences. He was buried last Thursday. And um, his mass was at St. Math Cathedral. And I just want to, again, pay my respects to a former mayor who um, lived to 90 years old. He was, I mean, he was right up there to the end. And so I truly enjoyed, he has joyful spirit and so I appreciate it. Um, knowing and meeting our past mayor who served our community very well. And um, the last thing I would like to have, I know Mr. Councilman Troy Warner responded to the letter regarding um, the um, bill that we had already voted on. And I would just like to request a meeting with um, afterwards with Mr. um, Warner and our attorney Bob Palmer. Um, in Ms. uh, Councilman Warner's email that he sent to all of us, he outlined the best way to go forward with that, some different routes. And I wanted to make sure that I was in keeping with how he saw it and also in keeping with um, our council attorney. So, if we could schedule some times where we can just break some bread and eat, especially right now, I'm hungry. But since we didn't eat tonight before this meeting, but if we can have some breakfast sometime this week, so we can get that going. And then um, we can move forward with that, uh, Councilman Warner. I appreciated your um, recommendations.
Here, thank you. And I uh, thank Mr. Palmer for sending the process and procedure on revoking the license and also looking up some history on the license.
Yeah.
Uh, I did email him today. I said if we had time in community investment. I know we couldn't deliberate on the merits of the bill, but we could have discussed process.
Yeah.
Uh, but we ran out of time to be able to do that.
I agree. So we just talk about, get some highlights because that's something I was working on prior to coming back in. So we can compare those notes and then looking at what you're talking about. And then we can have a nice presentation or a letter that we can send to the full council so the neighbors will be able to clearly understand. And I, hopefully, we can be able to correct that as soon as possible. So thank you, sir. And thank you too, Mr. Palmer, for your wisdom in that.
Thank you.
I'm done, y'all.
Thank you. Is there any other unfinished business?
Um, yes, I'd like to um, hope this is unfinished business, but I'd like to give a shout out to South Bend Community School Corporation and the graduates.
Yeah.
And a special shout out to Rise Up Academy um, that recently um, won a $3 million grant to help the most vulnerable students in our city. And um, under the leadership of Francois Biongana, we have doubled our graduation rate. And these students have come over hills and mountains, have been through a lot. Many of them at Rise Up Academy are the first in their families to graduate from high school. The tears of joy would melt your heart and it always does. They get angry at me as their guidance counselor and then they're hugging me and saying, "Thank you for pushing me." So many other schools are working hard. Rise Up has to take, takes the ones that have struggled a bit and we give them hope. So a shout out to the principals, the guidance counselors, and even our superintendent.
Madam Chair, is there one more thing?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if I have ever done it yet, but I wanted to make sure, that I wanted to make sure that I gave a salute and a thank you publicly to Ms. our clerk, city clerk, Ms. Bianca Toronto. Um, I was checking the 2014 minutes, all are caught up and everything. I reviewed every single one of them. And I, I don't think I have officially um, done that at this meeting and I apologize. I wanted to get that off my head today. I was going through all my things I needed to say thank you and she came up on my list today and I, and I said, "Let me thank you tonight" so I can go to sleep in peace. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. At this time, I'll turn to see if there's any new business. Um, one of the things that I would like to announce, that the June 24th meeting filing date will be moved from June 19th until Tuesday, June 18th due to Juneteenth.
Okay.
Being on that um, date. So the filing date for June 24th will be moved from the 19th until Tuesday, is moved up a day to the 18th. A press release will also come to follow. I'm sorry.
Does the city council have a table at Juneteenth?
We don't have.
No. I, I don't know if, Clerk Toronto may have gotten me one.
Okay, I didn't know if I needed to be there or not. I mean, I'm planning to be there, but I know we needed to be.
If there is, if there is an appetite for enough council that will be in attendance, the council will get a table if they're still available.
Cool. Thanks.
So we can get with, uh, if you are interested in going, please see the clerk's office tonight before you leave so we can make sure that we get it timely. Thank you. Any other new business?
Yes, um, Madam President, I would like to make this announcement that the South Bend Common Council Youth Advisory Council will be hosting a town hall meeting on Tuesday, June 18th. It's going to be held at Century Center and Recital Hall. Uh, they will be discussing um, issues that impact them and the need for more youth engagement. But also, they're going to be talking about other issues that directly impact them. We're fortunate to have Mr. Joshua Short, who will be the moderator. So it's open to the public and also to all council members.
And what time?
It's from 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM.
Thank you.
Madam President.
Councilor Lee?
Yes, I just want to announce that on June 12th, from 6:00 PM until 8:00, um, Community Investments will be having a Portage Elwood Visioning Meeting at Measor School. And I'm trying to pull up the address right now and it's not working out for me, but uh, there we go. But at Measor Elementary School, June the 12th, the, the one that we had at the Brown Learning, um, Learning Center was amazing and attended very well. So for those individuals who would like to give information or input on the Portage Elwood Plaza area and, and just to help with the visioning for that. It was a great event and it's a great opportunity. Yes, sir.
Councilman Lee, it is at Measor School, is that 1021 Blaine Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46616. Again, Measor Elementary School, 1021 Blaine, B-L-A-I-N-E, Blaine Avenue, South Bend, Indiana, 46616, which is 1.2 miles exactly from this building.
Thank you, Dr. Davis.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? At this time, in this privilege of the floor, disrespectful root or disruptive speech or actions will not be tolerated. Such speech or actions, as well as verbal attacks on any one person, may result in an individual's notice, forfeiting the remainder of his or her allotted time. Individuals who would wish to address the council must state their name and residential address. Individuals will be limited to three minutes only. The maximum time for this portion of the meeting shall be 30 minutes. Individuals should not be permitted to address topics which the council has heard previously on the agenda. The president may assign a topic raised by individuals during the privilege of the floor to the appropriate council member and to request the city clerk to contact the member of administration and be responded to by the next council meeting. At this time, we will start the privilege of the floor. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jesse Davis, PO Box 10205, South Bend, Indiana. It's been a while since I've been here, a few years actually. I used to attend on a very regular basis. And I felt the need to come here tonight, number one, because of an issue that was apparently put off until later in the month. But there were also some other things that bothered me because I do watch the meetings at home. And there's been a lot of things going on that just really are appalling. And it's a shame that we seem to be moving backwards instead of forwards in our city. Transparency has seemed to gone out the window, you know? You, you can't get information and documents that you legally should be allowed to get in a timely manner, if you can get them at all. We've got several stories about council members that are, you know, hitting the media that aren't really good stories for you people that are supposed to be representing us. And, I mean, I have to ask, I, I, I saw Councilmember Nizgatsky approach a gentleman and looked like she was going to hit the gentleman. That's horrible, just horrible. And, and I will say, I have questions about the income that the city is paying to that company. And people are having problems getting that information and they shouldn't have problems.
Again, Mr. Davis, um, what I've stated at the last meeting, and I'll say again, the council does not have oversight over contracts. This is the wrong form.
Oh, no, no, no. See, see, you're wrong there.
From what you just asked.
No, you're wrong.
To provide that information.
I sued the city in 2010 over this type of corruption. And if they'd like another lawsuit, we can do that.
You are welcome to contact.
And Nizgatsky Plumbing.
You are welcome.
Was being pushed by the city on the customers in 2010.
You are welcome to ask the legal department and administration for their documentation. We do not house that documentation to give your contact. So that is the forum that.
When, when people apply their APRA's into the legal. When people apply their APRA's into the legal department, they're getting denied. That needs to be looked into. That's something that the city council should look into.
If that's something that you're addressing, absolutely. But to address us like as though we house the contracts to turn over, that is not under our jurisdiction. So I would ask that you would keep anyone.
Look, transparency and honesty is the most important thing in our communities and in our government.
You're absolutely right.
And if we don't have that from our elected officials, then we got nothing.
But if we're being, if we're being honest, if I just heard you correctly, if I heard you correctly, you agreed that it's not housed with us, so that's the wrong form.
A lot of dishonesty.
And you can request that information again.
I spent five years in a court of law because of the dishonesty.
You can read, you can get that information from the legal department. And if there's a problem, I appreciate you telling me. I don't mind stepping with you afterwards. And as the president, making sure that I get with the legal department. And if you requested that information, to make sure that you have.
Let's get back to transparency, honesty, and a little bit of dignity because there hasn't been much of that at some of these council meetings. That's all I'm going to tell you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sue Kessel, 402 Kennedy Drive. As I stand here, I'm exercising the most important right we have as Americans. It's the First Amendment right to free speech. It's so important to the founding fathers, they made it number one. You may not like me. You may not like what I have to say. You may disagree with it. I still have a right to state my views uninterrupted. Quote, "An environment that is not safe to disagree is not an environment focused on growth. It's an environment focused on control." It's a quote from Wendy Jade. I am here to remind you that censorship is the first act of dictators and the death knell of democracy. I'll say it again. I'm here to remind you that censorship is the first act of dictators and the death knell of democracy. Another quote, "Fear and monarchy pair nicely, but democracy means you have to work with people you may not like, but you must still believe are your equals. And a fearful people never trust the other side." It's a quote from Martha Nussbaum. People have approached me to say things for them because they do not want to be treated poorly by this council. It saddens me, the people of this city do not feel welcomed or safe talking to the people who are supposed to represent their interests. This amounts to a failure in governance that needs to change. I ask that you create an ordinance detailing the rights and respect for the public that appears before you. I also ask that you open up your hearts and ears to new ideas and actually incorporate those ideas. The council needs to be welcoming and incorporate the views of those they represent. I've given to Clerk Torado two suggested ordinances. One is on social media, where I was locked for no reason from the animal control site. And another is on the privilege of the floor. I've also given those ordinances to your legal representative, Mr. Palmer. I realize they're not in their finished form, but I did ask that they, the points in them be considered as you go forward.
Thank you so much. Next, please state your name and address for the record. You can come on up.
Good evening, I'm Brendan Crumlish, local businessman with an office at 3215 Sugar Maple Business Court in South Bend. I'm here tonight as the president of Businesses United 4. We are a corporation representing over 20 South Bend businesses. We are seeking fairness for the truly homeless in our community, as well as greater fiscal responsibility from our local government. And lastly, fairness and freedom for all media platforms to share and report on the actions of our government. All this is transparent for the genuine improvement of the city of South Bend. A month ago, Businesses United 4 sent an email to each of you requesting a meeting with us individually to hear our initiatives to help solve many of the homeless issues within our city. We have email receipts from you showing the messages were delivered to your official city addresses. However, only three of you agreed to meet with us individually. Councilwoman Ophelia Gooden Rogers, Councilwoman Karen White, and Councilman Oliver Davis. These meetings were tremendously informative for us as well as you, our representatives. We had many positive discussions. However, the rest of you have chosen to ignore us. Councilwomen Nizgauski, McBride, Holden Simpson, and Morgan, as well as Councilman Lee and Warner. Most astounding was the email reply we received from Councilwoman Sheila Nizgauski. Here is her reply to us dated May 11th, 2024. "I am unavailable to meet with you or anyone from your group individually. I will not meet with any member of the Foster family. If you would like to list the questions and/or suggestions, I can forward them to the appropriate city department and the mayor. Regards, Sheila." Not only was she refusing her elected responsibility to meet with her constituents, she singled out the entire Foster family not to speak to them. This message was sent two days prior to her assault on Logan Foster after the subsequent city council meeting on May 13th, 2024. Equally disturbing is her implication that the mayor's office would address our questions. And as the council vice president, she demonstrated absolute surrender to his control of all decisions regarding our local legislative business. Therefore, I'm asking each of you to reconsider and meet with us one-on-one to hear what Businesses United 4 has identified as legitimate measures to save our city from being overrun by more homeless immigrants from surrounding states and communities. Please meet your obligation to our community as our duly elected officials and meet with us, your constituents, and hear what we have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please state your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Serena Howley at 1013 East Jefferson, South Bend, Indiana. And my, I'm coming just as a concerned citizen. I did see the video that's on public social media on Ms. Nizgauski on the attack of Logan Foster. It's a concern from a public view from your citizens that you represent. So if somebody at some point doesn't like what they say, who's to say you might attack me or anyone else? Or use whatever measures? I mean, I believe this is unbecoming to your entire committee in behavior. So my question to you would be, have you, any of you committee members, have you done anything to reprimand or discipline? Or have you asked for the resignation of Ms. Nizgauski? I mean, have any of you done any of that? I mean, what, who's to say something? Is this appropriate behavior coming from your panel? Is it? I mean, if I did the reverse, would that be acceptable? I don't believe it would be. And I believe I would be held accountable. So where is the accountability? You serve the people, and that is your first obligation, is serving the people you represent and making a checks and balance within yourselves as a whole and as a group. So you're diminishing, actually, you're diminishing the trust from the public with your group. If you allow behavior, whether it's ethical, whether it's misrepresentation of tax dollars, whether it's whatever, if it's deemed irresponsible or biased or a conflict of interest, you have an obligation, at least to the public that you represent, and to instill that trust. So I thank you for your time, but please consider, I would ask that you please consider, what have you done? Are you doing anything? Because if you choose to do nothing, then each and every one of you approves of that behavior. And I find it unacceptable, unacceptable of all of you. So please consider, and I would ask that you look this over. I mean, can I get a response from anyone? Will anyone respond that you are doing anything or not doing anything?
There's one thing, first of all, the only thing that I would say for any position, for any official.
Okay.
And the rest could be deferred to our council. However, when it comes to an elected official, no matter what, whether they're the council, Michawalka, city, when a person is an elected official, they're elected by the people. And the council does not have jurisdiction or any other entity to remove an elected official from that. So that would be me, the council, any of us cannot ask if you are on the council for you to be removed or unelected. There's a process for that. And that would be, I could defer over to the parliamentarian. There is a rules committee, and there is also a process. And of course, there have been some, through that process, the parliamentarian could talk further about it. But if there's a complaint, it is passed on to the council, and the committee looks into every complaint. But with that, I can turn the rest of it over to the parliamentarian.
Right, to the parliamentarian, if, Ms. Chair, that is one of the reasons why I have initiated work to address the privilege of the floor. And we ran late today. But I'm working on, and the council members are working with, how to handle the privilege of the floor on your end, so you will feel more protected on our end, so we will feel more respected. So how to balance that out? And that's one of the reasons why I had, I just said a few minutes ago that I want to take a look at all in the state of Indiana, 21 places from large cities, Indianapolis, to down small cities, Elkhart, to see how they handle it. Because conflicts do arise at all levels, whether it's a small town to a mid-sized city to Indianapolis. And I want to look at how they do that from their standpoint. And then make some decisions on our council, you know, that we can take to our rules committee. We cannot, this does not have what we call in our state. We can remove people from committee chairs and those kind of things, but we cannot remove people from that. But there are different ways that that can be handled. But that whole process is something that I would like for us to include as we look at how to handle the privilege of the floor and interpersonal relationships with our community, with ourselves, including emails, how to handle emails and everything else and whatever things. So that's what I publicly have said that I wanted to do, to address that. Because that was not only that night, but other nights we've had where we've had a look at that and how to better that.
So you have no code of ethics? Like you as a group have no code of ethics?
We do have a code of ethics, but that's where we want to make sure that that is handled in an appropriate way. And then this, the rules committee, because of the other thing, ran late today, okay?
Sure, I understand.
And so therefore, this is going to be, this whole discussion is a part of that whole loop where it's not just personal with only against one person, but how do we address that for all of us, okay? And how do we deal with that? And in that discussion, we will then have how we can handle those kind of things. But that way, it's not a discussion where it's just personally singled out from that standpoint. And I think I recognize what you're talking about. I clearly understand, but I would like for us to do it in that kind of a setting. So it won't be just a this versus this, or something versus Ms. Nizgauski, and then another thing for Ms. White, another thing for me, that we can look at how we handle that kind of situation and take it to the rules committee.
But you're speaking about future situations? Are you talking about this situation?
The only way we can deal with future situations is by looking at past and current situations. I am clearly a social worker, and I have to take a past history plus the current history to make plans for the future. So therefore, we have to look at all of that to be able to make a nice determination that will be something that will protect everybody who comes, whether we agree with them or not. And also how to handle that from our standpoint when we're upset or whatever, for we can all be protected as we build up our city.
Parliamentarian, do you have anything to add?
Yes, the complaint system that President McBride referred to, one of the first steps is a preliminary investigation.
We can't hear you.
We can't hear you.
The mic's not on. Do you have that button? Push that button. Yeah.
The complaint system that President McBride referred to is the process by which complaints can be filed against council members. One of the first steps in that process is a preliminary investigation. Everything through the preliminary investigation is confidential by city ordinance.
Okay, so each individual can file a complaint? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
And no individual will know about anybody else's?
Correct.
Correct? Okay, okay. But my question is, so has this, has, is this just null and void? Nobody's going to pay any attention to this situation? Or is this part of what you're, what you are talking about? So going forward with the committees that you're putting together to discuss the changes, is this part of whether there will be something done?
I think what I stated was that we have been receiving some information coming in. And so that is the first start that the parliamentarian is talking about.
Okay.
So from that point, that answers that question, yes, ma'am.
So it's not dropped? Okay, all right, I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please state your name and address for the record.
Sarah Foster, 1138 College Street. On Monday, May 13th, I watched Vice President Sheila Nizgauski assault and attempt battery on my husband, Logan Foster. Vice President Nizgauski's assault has left my family living in fear. Because if she could assault a citizen inside of the council chambers, what is she capable of doing outside of the chambers? The lack of accountability for Vice President Nizgauski's actions is appalling. As a citizen, a woman, and a wife, I am disgusted. Had my husband raised his hand with the intent to hit her as she did to him, he would have been dragged out of the building in handcuffs. Why wasn't she treated the same way that he would have been? The citizens of South Bend deserve better leadership, and that is why I and 183 members of the public have signed a petition calling for Vice President Nizgauski's resignation. If not a resignation, at the very least, we demand that she be relieved from all committee and vice president responsibilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Bruce Huntington. I'm an attorney with law firm of Botkin and Hall at 1003 North Hickory Road here in South Bend. I have been engaged by Businesses United 4 to assist them in the work that they're doing with regard to two matters. One is this issue that Mr. Davis is working so diligently on with regard to the matters of the privilege of the floor. These issues need to be resolved so that we have guidelines and means by which we can bring all of the issues without fear of retribution, anger, frustration, and to put things into the public easily and readily. The second thing I have been engaged to do is to participate with the council and with Businesses United 4 with regard to the matter of the Homeless Intake Center on Bendix Road. I am a land use lawyer, a real estate lawyer, and a state certified general appraiser now for a very, very long time. And this is my area of the law and my area of practice for more than 40 years. The point would be that Businesses United 4 wishes to work cooperatively rather than condescendingly or in any other way against the wishes of the city and against the wishes of this council and the work of this council. And my job has been described to me as to make things work cooperatively. And so that's my statement. That's what I will be here for. I'm readily contacted, I know Ms. White, I know Mr. Davis. Ms. Nizgauski and I had a very pleasant conversation one time at Our Lady of Hungary Church, you may remember that, regarding minority business enterprises and support. And so I'm readily available. Mr. Davis, contact me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, honorable council members. My name is Charlotte Pfeifer. I reside at 1013 West Washington Street in South Bend. This weekend, can you hear me?
Yes.
Am I echoing?
Yeah, we good.
Okay, this weekend I had the honor of watching young people participate with an African dance troupe. Uzima, who I'm sure you've heard of, is having a program for Juneteenth. And these were just babies, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12 years old, dancing. And then there was another group of, I'm 77, so, young people who are in their 30s and 40s. And then the elders are also going to participate. Seeing these young people dance with such pride and such bounce, just, it almost made me cry. I was just so thrilled. And I thought, this ought to be taught at the Martin Luther King Dream Center. Then I thought, what is happening at the Martin Luther King Dream Center? So that's what I'm here to talk to you about. So that's what I'm here to talk to you about. I wanted to talk to you a little bit about African dance and all kinds of dance classes, what they do. Number one, African dance instills pride, and it develops character. Number two, it promotes social interaction. Children can learn how to follow orders in a fun and meaningful way, and they can develop leadership skills. African dance helps them burn all that energy, and it also makes a very strong, healthy body. Dance is not just physical, but it's intellectual, by the way. You have to use another part of the brain, and it just makes the whole body work in tune. Also, African dance, you can have a career. You can get scholarships to go to college, and it can orient a disoriented brain, and it can also quiet a fiery brain, and it can help these children who need respectful discipline. It just does wonderful things. And so I thought, well, let me come down. I went on the website, and I looked up the Martin Luther King Dream Center, and I couldn't find much, but it looks like it hasn't been updated in two years. I could be wrong, but you might want to check that. So I've come to you to ask you if you could update me, and maybe you and other community members, on the progress of the Martin Luther King Dream Center. Not just the physical progress, but what programs are happening there? What kind of things are happening there? I'm requesting, well, what is the completion date? When is the grand opening? What programs will be offered, and who's going to teach these programs? What classes, like sports, computer, education, reading, language, motivational, et cetera? You know, what kind of things are going to be happening? You know, if you look at the makeup of our community, the Martin Luther King Dream Center would be an excellent place to teach Spanish. I just wondered, does the council have updates, and have there been any kind of changes? I noticed there's a community advisory board. I don't know if that board is still happening, who's on it, and how often do they meet? So if you could get back to me about that, I would love to know what's happening and want to be involved with it. I go by it every day. It's in our neighborhood. There are plenty of neighbors here. We love that area. We love what you're doing, and we just want to make sure that it's more than just sports.
Thank you.
Can I give you a copy?
To Clerk Torrado, please.
Councilman Warner and Councilman Lee, he is the committee chair for VPA, so I'm sure they can give you an update or lead you in the right direction. Councilman Lee and Councilman Warner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Ann Mannix, 724 West Washington. I'm the president of the Near West Side Neighborhood Association, and I'm here to talk briefly about the brownfields. I want to thank Councilman Warner for responding, and we have had, we have serious environmental problems at the west end of West Washington. Herwich Iron has been not operating for 20 years, and for some reason, they applied for a license, and the license was approved, and that may have been an oversight, but it is an issue. And then the zoned industrial, so the question is, can they operate there? Will they be grandfathered in? And then we have Cherry Street, which is also South Bend Range, and a bunch of barrels were dumped there. EPA came in and took the barrels out, so it needs more investigation. There's a lot of trees. I was reading the environmental site, so they said, clear the trees, and then test the ground different places and tear down the building. And the city is getting that site through a tax certificate, and then they're going to purchase it. And the third site is a 1,500 block of West Washington. It's a big vacant lot opposite all the churches, and that has various chemicals that exceed the allowable limits, and the lead limit is higher than the excavation limit. So people have to wear hazmat suits. And I'm not an environmental scientist, but I've read the reports, and they all, we have a lot of chemicals, arsenic, lead, that's over the limits. So what we would like is to have some, which Councilman Warner proposed, is to have a committee so the neighbors know what's going on. I would prefer not to just say, the city's dealing with it, and we'll get back to you. So we'd like to be in on the planning, and we'd like to have a plan for those and know what it is, and then see if we can change the zoning so that it is compatible, because area is slated for development, and the neighborhood are right by South Bend Range. So nobody's going to buy a house next to a toxic waste dump, and it also affects people's health. So we just want to get in on the decision-making, if possible. And I want to thank people for their support, and Troy Warner, so we look forward to working with you. And we like our neighborhood, we like the council, and appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Some of the neighbors are here and support.
Thank you. I do know there is definitely a need for discussion in the meeting, but some of the things that I do know, that some of that land was encapsulated to and tested, and it is also slated to be on the cleanup list along with juries, so it has been scheduled. But there's still a lot of discussion, a lot of work, and a lot of questions and concerns, but I didn't want to put a lot of fear in the residents, because it has been barriered and mediated for the immediate release, but it definitely needs a lot of work and a lot of discussion. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Jim Bogner, 807 West Washington Street, South Bend, Indiana. I want to piggyback on Ann for a moment, and I want to give a little bit of history, which I think is very important this evening. What I'm going to read into the record is minutes from a community investment committee meeting on June 23, 2014. That's two weeks shy of 10 years ago. The other bill on the agenda, 1465, was an interlocal agreement among the city of South Bend, Mitchellwauka, and St. Joseph County to jointly apply for and manage US EPA brownfield dollars. Chris Dressel from the CI Department explained that the $600,000 available will be first used for county-wide survey of potential polluted sites. The survey contracted to a private firm would include prioritization of sites for cleanup as well as an estimate of the cleanup costs. Tim Scott, president of the council at that time, asked when the last inventory was taken. Chris said 10 years ago. That would have been 2004. Dr. Furlik, on the council at that time, asked if there was an idea which sites might be the worst. Chris said, based upon the last survey, 2004, juries in South Bend Range. Ultimately, Valerie Shea motion for favorable recommendation, Gavin Furlik seconded and all affirmed. So what we have here is at least 20 years. More likely, if you look at the information on the city's website and the comprehensive plan, at least since 2000. I appreciate everything this council has done. I appreciate what they're doing, but we need action. The EPA has plenty of money. We need this council to consider environmental issues, and maybe even an environmental committee, because it just isn't here. In the 4th district, there's Frederickson Park. It continues to get tested to this day, four times a year, from the Department of Public Works for its problems as a superfund site. That is over 30 years. So even though the city is moving forward, I can tell you from dealing with EPA and IDEM, there are serious issues in all parts of this that Ann described. We're asking for your help. We know you have difficult jobs. We know it's been difficult here. Anytime I've ever tried to work with any of you, you've been very gracious and very kind. But I think it's time right now to prioritize this area, to look at environmental justice for us, and to set the tone for the future. And let me leave one last thing. This area is within eyesight of the King Center, almost $20, $25 million project that will define our neighborhood for generations. It is incumbent upon us to be able to do something about this, but we can't do it without your help, and we can't make you care. You've got to have it in yourselves to want to do so, and I believe you do, and I believe in this council, and I believe in moving forward. I thank you for your service and your time, and I yield the floor.
Thank you. Clerk Torrado, do you see anyone online?
I do. Mr. Foster, will you please unmute yourself and state your name and address?
Can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Thank you. Dawn Foster, 132 Chapin Street, South Bend. And I just have a statement to make. Tonight, I'm officially requesting the resignation of South Bend Common Council Vice President Sheila Nizgowsky following her assault and intimidation on Logan Foster at the conclusion of the May 13 Common Council meeting. I witnessed this firsthand in person. Should Vice President Nizgowsky choose not to resign, I demand the remaining eight council members to censor her actions and strip her of all committee assignments. Furthermore, I insist that this vote be conducted in a public forum so the community, the people of the city, the citizens can be fully informed about which council members condone assault, intimidation, and the suppression of free speech. This matter must be addressed without delay. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Mrs. Foster, please unmute yourself and state your name and address.
Yes, this is Peggy Foster at 321 Sugar Maple Business Court. I also have a statement very similar. I'm officially requesting resignation of South Bend City Councilwoman Sheila Nizgowsky following her assault attempt of the May 13 Common Council meeting. Should Vice President Nizgowsky choose not to resign, I compel the remaining eight council members to censor her actions and strip her of all committee assignments. Furthermore, I insist that this vote be conducted in a public forum so the community can be fully informed about which council members condone assault, attempted battery, and intimidation along with the suppression of free speech. This matter must be addressed without delay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
I do not see anyone else from the public wishing to speak under privilege of the floor.
Thank you. With that being said, we stand adjourned. Good night.